I pray allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have Reverend Eddie Stith from First Assembly to lead us in prayer.
Can we bow? Father, we thank you for today, God, that we can come together in this great city, in this great county. God, I thank you that you have assembled this board and this superintendent and all of his staff here today, God, to lead our students into the next generation, into tomorrow, God, with excellence in education. God, I pray that you would just reveal your strategic plan, Father, to lead them and guide them, God, to give them hope, Father, that their future is bright and it's clear and it's full of all possibilities. And Father, I pray that you would guide today's board meeting, God. Father, I pray right now over the faculty and staff. Father, I pray health and safety. I pray blessings over their family, God. And I pray for this great city and this great community, that, Father, that you would bless it once again and pour out your presence in our community, in the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Let me remind you to silence your phones if you haven't already done so. And if anyone is here who would like to make a public comment, please fill out the card and return it to either Sharon or Pam. They're both seated over here. Okay, we're going to start with our public hearing. And the first is the adoption of policy 5136.01 concerning electronic equipment. Is there any discussion?
Make a motion, we accept.
I think I have discussion, that's what I said.
Okay, I'm sorry.
She was only muted here. I was saying, I'm almost there, sorry. Okay, this is 5136. I noticed that we have some choices in parentheses that were already done. Is this something that's not our choice? Do you know what I'm saying? Like, if you look at, students may use WCDs before and after school and then in parentheses it's been chosen during their lunch break and then in between classes has been removed and we... When NEOLA first came, we had extensive workshops because we did all our policies over. And the board had choices and that's what these little parentheses were. And we picked what we wanted, but here there's no choices. It's like things have been crossed out for us and chosen for us. So I'm just wondering, is this something new?
Sharon is the policy expert, isn't she?
You'd electronic policy expert?
State your name, please.
Not you. Sharon Cormany, Executive Secretary. What happens with the policies when they come in, especially these, would have choices or whatever, they are reviewed with the department head. These are all IT-related policies. We reviewed them with Ms. McInnes and the IT department. And regarding, you know, how we... The IT department wants to do this, I believe you might have some better insight, you know. I present them, the department heads review them and come up with the suggestions and the options that are chosen.
Okay. As you see, there's an extensive list of policies and then also the updates. The updates are automatic. They reflect the legislative mandates that we have to meet through NEOLA. The policies that are up for adoption, essentially how we did it, as Sharon explained, we met with NEOLA and then I took some of the information back and met with John Lockhart and Justin. And where we crossed out things, it's because we already have other policies that reference that but don't exactly allow it. Does that make sense? Okay. There are policies... How can I explain this clearly? Okay, there are policies that cross. There are references made in one policy to what's in another policy. So in order to make things match, we looked at some of our existing policies and made sure that these policies reflected what was already in other policies that aren't necessarily amended or new.
So they're duplications.
Exactly.
In other words, it says...
Duplication and redundancy.
Yeah. Well, it says, "Students who violate this provision and/or use a wireless device to violate the privacy rights of another person shall or may have their wireless device confiscated." So you've chosen "shall," not "may," so that means somewhere else.
Right, that reflects... And it could be something that we looked at in policies that Travis's department is responsible for. So all of those policies do cross over, which is exactly why we need NEOLA. And based upon their meeting and recommendations and research from the team in my department, which included myself that put this together, this is what we're recommending. Now, again, it may be that we want to have a board workshop on this and...
Well, the way I look at it is that the experts are making the choices, so we don't have to. But it's our policy. Right, but, I mean, we don't have to approve it. Well, I know, I'm not saying I don't want to approve it. I'm just used to making... I understand if there's other policy, you know, that I understand. I have no problem with that.
We just don't want three different policies that are all saying something different.
Different, I understand that. That's not a problem to me, but...
Is the problem that it says "may" or "shall"?
No, it's the problem that 45 decisions have been made for us in these poli... I don't know, 45, could be 100. But all these... We have no choices. It's been presented to us with the choices being made. NEOLA gives us these policies and there's choices.
And you're right. That is our job and NEOLA just helps them comply with law. We could change this any way we wanted as long as it complied with law. I mean, but that's...
I'm not saying to change it. I'm just saying to let us make the choices unless there's conflicting or another policy that...
Exactly, and that's what we found ourselves looking at.
Just to give an example...
Sure.
We do try to help narrow down because when NEOLA comes in, in some cases you have numerous options you can choose. The example you gave about having it on before or after school and not on during the school day, for example, that is a rule in the Code of Conduct that the board's adopted. So we have to go through it. We try to narrow those down for the board. Now, with that being said, you can... It is, it's your policy. But let's say the board chose to allow them to have them on during the school day. Well, then we have to go in and amend another policy and the Code of Conduct. I just want to give you an example of how there's choices sometimes.
Would it be possible in the future? I'm not... I mean, we've got so many here, I don't want to make problems. I really don't. I'm just used to doing it where the board makes the choices, when there are choices to be made. But in the future, when we find that there is existing policy or Code of Conduct or whatever, can we somehow indicate that's why the choice has been made or take the choice away from the board? Just make it the bus driver. I'm just looking at a school bus or what, at the discretion of the bus driver instead of classroom teacher or sponsor advisor coach or building principal. Bus driver has been chosen. I mean, I don't know. I just don't want to take the choices out of the board's hands if it's not necessary. And it's necessary when we have other policy or Code of Conduct. Then it's necessary and we shouldn't even have to see choices, as far as I'm concerned. Just put it the way we've already approved. We've already approved the Code of Conduct. We've already approved these other policies. So then this has to line up with it.
We can definitely do that. So, you know, if there's choices that are made that reflect items in other policies that it wouldn't even show as a choice on what you get.
I think that would make me feel better. I don't know about the rest of the board, but when there's...
We can... It's an editable thing and we can certainly do that.
That would be wonderful. Or reference the policy, if you can. I mean, that would certainly make it some explanatory Code of Conduct, CLC.
In some places the policies are referenced. Some of the reference policies we don't have. So we had to vet that out as well. There's a lot that goes into this, but as far as the choices, checking off which items, is that essentially what you're looking at?
All of them have been made. We don't have one choice here for the board to make, not one. And there are quite a few in these policies.
Even if you had them like they are, there's nothing that precludes the board from overriding its own policy. If we find an anomaly or something out of line, we can do that, but that's normally done against the attorney's advice. But I have seen us do it before. I don't... It's... I understand why Kathy's interested because that's what we do.
Well, in terms of it's not going to be a problem, so...
It's policy, yeah.
It won't be a problem. It's just an editing thing and, like Travis said, sometimes there's numerous things that don't even apply to what, you know, our policies would need to include. And it's just an editing issue and I think we can handle that.
That would be great because I think I'm the only one that was here when NEOLA first came in and we had hundreds and hundreds of choices to make as we established our first policy manual. And then I see, you know, all these choices being made and it's for a good reason, assuming that, you know, that it's tying into other policies. So I would appreciate that.
Okay.
And we're ready for your motion, Mr. Buckles.
I make a motion, we accept.
Thank you, Sharon.
The adoption, adopt.
All those in favor?
We need a second.
Oh, second.
It's okay. Kathy will teach you.
You say... Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I didn't get the second, I'm so sorry.
Sandra Gilliard.
Okay, thank you.
The motion passes. Next is the adoption of policy number 7530.02, which is concerning staff use of wireless communication devices.
I make a motion, we approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Adoption of policy number 7540.06, district-issued student email account.
So moved, that we approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Number four, adoption of policy number 8300, continuity of organizational operations plan.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Am I supposed to be asking for discussion before each one of these?
Usually, usually when you get a motion, a second, you say, "Any discussion?"
Okay, I'm sorry.
I mean, that's up to you. You're chairman, you can do what you want.
Okay. All right. Next is adoption of policy number 8305, information security.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number six, amendment to bylaw number 100, definitions.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Amendment to policy number 5136, wireless communication devices.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Amendment to policy number 7530, lending of board-owned equipment.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Amendment to policy number 7530.01, board-owned wireless communication devices.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Amendment to policy number 7540, technology.
So moved.
It's your turn, Sharon.
Is there a second?
I know, your turn.
You go ahead.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I didn't want to hog all the seconds.
Okay, that's okay. Let's just...
My dad told me to leave the seconds on the table. Anyway, aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Amendment to policy number 7540.01, technology privacy.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Amendment to policy number 7540.02, web content services and apps.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Amendment to policy number 7540.03, student technology acceptable use and safety.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Miss, we had a question.
I just want to make sure because in going through it, it says, "The staff shall provide instruction to their students regarding the use of..." Are we making sure that this is being done? You know, that students don't violate the policy having not been instructed by the teacher. So are the teachers being made aware that they are responsible for this?
Ms. Buckles?
I'm sure it's up to the principals. Good question. Because we don't want to put teachers in a position where if they don't know...
Okay. Essentially, what occurred right there was that has always been part of the policy. Unfortunately, I'm the fourth director in IT right now in a four-year time span and not one, including myself, have actually done that. There were a lot of trainings that we did not deliver that we were cited for in the audit and that's where our department began. And so for probably within the spring, we will do some of that training. It is within policy. And I believe the burden is on the school to deliver it, but I'm not certain if everyone reads policy.
Well, it seems like to me that would be the kind of thing, like in that first week of school, the teacher hands out a form and goes over it and said, "This is our acceptable student use policy" and they sign it with all...
We do have an acceptable use policy, except at this point, technology, especially in this district, within a year has grown exponentially and we have not kept up with everything that we should be doing. Hence, the reason for many of these policies, the reason that we have all the amendments to the policies, if you look, that's very extensive.
I know.
And as the Florida Department of Education is discovering these issues with school networks being inundated with devices, they are trying to provide training. They are trying to provide support and an emphasis in other areas where there was never a need. And that entire list is a reflection of that.
Okay, because it goes on to state that the building principal will train the teachers, then the teachers go back and train the students and so we want to certainly make sure that they are not being penalized for something that they weren't aware of.
Absolutely. And that's the thing. I think many of us were not fully aware of what we're supposed to do, but that awareness has changed.
Great, okay.
Thank you, Al.
You're welcome.
Okay, so do we have a motion for policy amendment 7540.03?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Oh, we just had discussion.
Had discussion.
You had a motion.
I remember now. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Amendment to policy number 7540.04, staff technology acceptable use and safety.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Amendment to policy number 7540.05, district-issued staff email account.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Sandy?
I apologize.
No, you don't need to apologize.
When I read it, I needed to make sure I'm in compliance. It said that I, being a board member now, must sign a safety form 7540.04F1. I have not signed one, so...
Neither have I.
Okay, so, okay. All right, it's in there.
I'm sure that's forthcoming.
Okay, I'm sure.
But that explanation will suffice for all of this, knowing that now we're going to get up to speed.
And that's why these amendments are in here, so we can...
I'm good.
Just a very quick explanation. We began with the policy and we began with adding the amendments from NEOLA, which were legislatively required. That was step one. Step two is developing the procedures and that our department will do and review with the superintendent so that he's aware of what they are. Step three are all of the forms. So that is within that policy, but all of the pieces that are required of that policy may not all be there yet. We have started the process, so they are coming, just be aware.
Yes, that's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Motion, a second. I think we've got a motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Amendment to policy number 7542, access to district technology resources and/or information resources from wireless communication devices.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And last but not least, amendment to policy number 7543, utilization of the district's website and remote access to the district's network.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it looks like we don't have any presentations today, so we'll move on to public comments. I have one card filled out from Mr. Robert DeFranco. If you'll come up to the podium, state your name and address.
Good afternoon. Robert DeFranco, Executive Director of a few organizations, but this is the Stepping Stones Learning and Behavior Center in Crescent City. I've been here before. 527 South Summit Street, Crescent City. I'm here today to see about 20... Just for Mrs. Ernstie and Ms. Kelly, welcome. Great to have you. About 20 months ago, we opened our center. We're a nonprofit community center. And at that time, we asked for a school bus stop for our before and after-school children, which is the same as the other childcare centers have in Crescent City. And I've learned, you know, through the few times that I've been here, that Crescent City may be the only area in Putnam County where this bus service is provided for the private centers. So we asked for a stop and we weren't able to get one for many reasons that we couldn't figure out. But so we then asked for equality, for parity. If we're not going to have a stop, then no one should have a stop. We went out and spent over $20,000 for a van and revamping it and getting a driver and getting it all insurance and all those things. So there's not a lot of profit margins. There's no profit margin in childcare centers and so we do the best to keep it open, but we're competing against another center that has two buses that roll in and out of their parking lot every morning with many, many students. And they have a van, so we're running the van. And so there was a meeting, I think, I believe it was September. Ms. Douglas, right? It was in September and the board voted that they would stop the services and provide it by contract. I believe Mr. Douglas was going to draw up some contracts if the centers wanted to pay for it in the same way that the charter schools do. And so it's been 60 days and I'm back here to try to find out what's happening and hopefully the bus service will be terminated or the contracts will go into effect after the holidays. So I'm here to ask where it's at right now.
Mr. Simons, do you care to speak to this?
I don't have anything to do with it.
You don't have anything to do with stopping the buses?
I didn't know if we grandfathered in existing ones helping here. We didn't, everybody...
No, I think the board, by consensus, and I think it's going to need to go on the agenda as input discussion and action.
Yes.
And I voted against...
That we discussed it and by consensus, we agreed to bill the pre-K schools and daycare centers in the same manner that we do the charter schools, which is for approximately half the cost because we only get from... Our funding provides half of what it costs us per student to transport them. The rest of that money comes out of our general fund.
So since we did that, your buses are still dropping off and...
They're still dropping off. And there were safety issues, many safety issues. The Department of Children and Families has had two investigations on one particular center because of the children going off into the street and some things and such. So it's not a safe situation.
You're not just a NAPA down there that...
Correct, correct, correct.
Well, I think, looking back, it was... We had a change, obviously, in leadership in the district and that could have led to us not complying. I'm not going to make an excuse because we should have had it done, but I think that that was what was voted. The majority of the board at that time voted in favor of what Kathy said, so I guess...
Yeah, we just discussed it. We just discussed it. We need to put it on here where we vote. We need it formally on the agenda.
You voted, ma'am, if... You did vote, there was a vote.
I think it did get... I need to go back and look.
Yeah, there was a vote and...
What Kathy's thinking is right, there was a discussion, but then after that, it was on the agenda.
It's about action, what was mentioned, you know. It was voted on and I think... Mr. Douglas, were you drawing up contracts?
No, I want you to go back and review the minutes of that meeting as well and confirm that there was an actual vote on it.
I knew it must not have happened when you said that because I haven't seen a lot of people complaining in the newspaper, but I'm sure they...
Yeah, that's right. The newspapers did write a story about it the next day.
They did, okay.
Okay, so what we're asking is that the board consider, or the district consider that effective after the holidays, the services will stop. And because I can tell you that the other centers have vans, they're capable of transporting, as we have been doing, and we're just looking for equality. It's very difficult for us to compete when they can charge their families less because they're not getting that free service. And there's two buses that you're...
It's kind of like, we can't have it, they can't either.
Just asking for equality, that's all.
That's what you're saying. You're not worried about getting it yourself as much as taking it.
We're running vans. We're doing it and we're paying for it.
You go research then and get back with us.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mrs. Ernstie. Thank you, thank you very much.
Superintendent will report.
Yeah, we'll follow through on that after we hear from Mr. Douglas.
Yeah, we got to follow up on this. It'll be in the minutes and et cetera. I don't think it was formed.
Okay, yeah, I don't remember it either. Okay, well, now moving on to the consent agenda. Do any of my colleagues have anything they would like to pull from the consent agenda? Ms. Gilliard?
None.
Mr. Buckles?
No.
Ms. Jorgensen?
G1 and I3.
G1 and I3.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda minus G1 and I3.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so let's pull... Let's look at G1 first. And that is the 2016-2017 personnel allocations change number 11, 11.1 through 11.4.
I'm questioning 11.1. Department of Staff Services were adding 10 teachers and... Andrea, explain that to me.
Yeah, there's a good explanation. These will be unfunded allocations and they will allow Debbie, when she's doing recruitment efforts, to go ahead and offer contracts to excellent teachers out there that are graduating and it will be with the understanding that they would start at the beginning of a school year when there would be an available slot for them to move into. But without having an allocation, she's not allowed to go ahead and issue a contract.
It allows us to use our pre-contact binders to let someone know, "We have an allocation for you. We have a position for you."
Like if a teacher's retiring or let us know they're not coming back at the end of the year.
They would not start until that allocation is empty and we can put them in that spot, but it will allow us to be ahead of the game a little bit with some other districts to try to get great teachers here.
So anytime I wanted to look, I would find 10 allocations that weren't filled out.
Correct. And if there is someone in it, it's purely as a placeholder because they've been offered a contract for the fall.
I understand. And then somebody's leaving in the fall that they're going to be plugged into.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. This is... It seems like it's really going to put us a step ahead in our recruitment processes where we've not ever been able to do this before.
Yes, ma'am.
Because we didn't have the districts. Because they go there with that power.
I make a motion, we accept.
I make a motion, we accept G1.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let's look at I3.
Go ahead. Okay, this is a project award notification, and I'm just curious why the board has to vote on this. I mean, we have so much to read. This was 20 pages or something. And I really don't see where it requires the board to vote on it. It's nice, it could be an announcement at the end of the meeting that we got this grant or whatever, but I could see maybe the board having to vote before we applied. But we've applied, we've gotten it.
And this is a reoccurring grant, that this one comes up every year, just like our Title II funds. This one just came in really late. But that would be, to me, it would be whether they want to, whether you want it on the board agenda or not.
The board could turn it down if they wanted, so.
They could, but it would need to come to the board for you to turn.
Would be what we would say, "No, don't apply, we've got too much else going on." Once it's awarded.
Well, this is not one that you would, this is a non-compete grant. It's one that we apply for and we get. You don't have to compete against other districts to, like our SIG IV grant, we're having to compete against every district in the state. This is, we, that money is allocated for this district. We just have to show the way that we're going to use that money, and then they award us that money.
Right. Well, I don't care.
But that's a matter of procedure, that it doesn't matter to me either way, if it comes to you or not.
It's up to the rest of the board. I mean, I would just soon not have to read stuff we don't have to read. You know, there's hundreds of pages as it is.
The superintendent would be the secretary to the board by law and would prepare our agendas. So I will take him to decide what we look at and have to depend on that. And if it's something we don't like, then like you just said.
All right, well, what are we voting on?
I would like to make a motion that we accept the grant, the Title VI, Part B, Subpart II Rule in Low-Income Schools Program REAP.
Second.
Yes, motion and second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. So now we move back to our consent agenda.
Emergency session.
Oh, so have we voted to approve all the other things besides G and I?
Yes.
We already did that?
Yes, I went, consent agenda minus session.
Sorry.
Well, it's easy to forget when you're taking over as chairman.
So now we will move, I have to hit this right. We will move out of regular session into emergency session. And our, we only have one emergency item today, and it concerns the out-of-state travel on December 7th through 8th of 2016 for Travis Weaver to attend the regional advisory meeting of the Intercultural Development Research Association, Regional Two Equity Assistance South. And the justification is that it is time-sensitive because it is coming up this weekend.
I make a motion, we approve.
Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes.
And just to point out, there was no cost to the district for that.
Oh, okay, that's right. Well, he did say he had to pay for parking.
He's going fuss.
Yeah, we'll have a bake sale or something, okay. All right, we'll move out of emergency session, back into regular session. We have no old business. We have no new business. So now it's time for our board reports. I'd like to start with Ms. Gilliard. Do you have anything you would like to report, Ms. Gilliard?
Well, I just would like to thank the district again for entrusting me with this position. And in Tampa, at the conference, very rewarding, very informative. I kind of juggled, had I known going into this, some of the legalities and some of the things that could come up. I tell you what, it is serious business, and you have to take it seriously because one little slip-up, you know, and he jokes about the FBI, but they were, they were serious.
Yes, they were.
In that we need to be serious about this business of managing our school district and making sure that all Ts across and all Is are dotted and that we don't accept gifts of certain values. So that that you might have planned to give me for Christmas, just forget it and just tell me you love me, thank you.
I'm saying nobody ever offered me a gift.
Thank you.
Flower arrangements, stuff like that.
Mr. Buckles?
Well worth it.
I don't think, I'm good.
Ms. Jorgensen?
Well, I'd like to thank everyone too for the trip to Tampa for FSBA. I had, someone questioned me about it, and I can't tell you how valuable it is and how much we learn.
Very much.
I've been, I don't know how many times, this is my 10th year as a board member, so it's at least 10 times because we have a summer conference. And the thing of it is, you don't learn the same stuff over and over. There's news, for example, one of the sessions I attended was Colorado's experience with medical marijuana in schools. And there are some wild legal issues we're going to get into, including students who are prescribed marijuana, teachers who are prescribed marijuana, et cetera, best practices in increasing graduation rates in small counties, leveraging your role as a charter school organizer. And that was just one day, we were there for three. Needless to say, the session on ethics that we're mandated to take is lengthy, four hours in a chair. I think I'm getting too old for that. And that's a little redundant, because I don't think the law's been changed other than we have to go every year to that course. But the information we glean from that annual conference is like nothing else. And we're looking into having a workshop, the board and the superintendent, the team, to discuss where we go from here, some of the things we learned and we want to go on with. Marion County has a pass program, which is in lieu of out-of-school suspension.
An expulsion.
An expulsion, which is really interesting. Alachua County had an influenza program, which doesn't sound like much, but their attendance rates soared over the three years that they had it. So there's just so much we can learn from other districts and other school board members as well. So I'd like to thank everybody for the opportunity to go. I'm glad our board went, and that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jorgensen. I too would like to thank you for being allowed to go to the FSBA conference. What you learn is just invaluable. You know, and it gave us the opportunity as board members and our new superintendent to discuss a lot, and there was a lot of excitement, which really just gets me that much more excited. One of the things that I enjoyed most, and Kathy has already talked about it, was increasing graduation rates in small districts and some of the things that they've done in Dixie County and Waukulla County, that I'm just really excited about sitting down with our staff and talking to you about some of the things they're doing because you can just look at the growth over the years, three or four years since they started this, how much, how much growth they've made. While we were there, we talked about, yes, David, having a small retreat. So, and we don't have to play with tinker toys. But because we have a new superintendent and some new staff members, and, you know, we want a new, we have a new vision and, you know, a new strategic plan, and those are things that we need to work on. I haven't been part of writing a vision and mission statement for, since I've been on the board, and I just would really like to be involved in that. I can't read all of my, oh, yesterday, we, there was a very nice reception down here for, for the principals and our area directors got up and spoke, and Dr. Surrancey spoke, and some very long-winded man spoke that paid for the refreshments. He was kind of funny, but, ooh, it got long. But anyway, it was, it was just a very nice gesture for everyone, for the principals and the staff to get together, and I enjoyed that. There are a lot of holiday programs going on. We got an invitation today for one, that was, was it last night?
Last night.
Last night, so we had no idea that they were having a choral program at QI Roberts, and I'm sure it was wonderful. So if there's any way for the principals or the sponsors, you know, they could even email us. They don't have to necessarily mail something out to us because, because it comes down here, and, you know, we don't come in every day as a rule, so just think about that. But anyway, it's going to be an exciting time in Putnam County District Schools, and I'm so thrilled to be a part of it. And with that, we will have a report from our fearless attorney, Mr. Douglas.
Thank you. Everything is going well in the legal department? Things are as we hope them to be.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Surrancey?
Yeah, the program last night at QI was remarkable, the.
He got the word.
Yeah, we got the word, Ms. France was there.
I know, he comes in every day.
But they fed us, we had a gym full of people. They have several bands, different bands and chorus, and they also had cloggers there. So we definitely enjoyed that. And Ms. Piazza put on a good show for us all, so thank you, QI. I want to talk about the Tampa trip. All the superintendents got together in Tampa as well, along with the school boards conference, and we had a chance to meet. Of course, I met with a lot of superintendents and, you know, had great sharing with them and, you know, learned a lot of things. And, but the thing I most got out of that was my time with our school board. And got to meet with them informally, you know, we talked about a new direction. And it's so important for us to come together, the superintendent, school board, to move in the same direction. You know, we want to make sure to keep them informed, you know, try to make sure they know what our vision is and what we're trying to accomplish. And I'm reaching out to them on a regular basis to do that, and I appreciate them reciprocating.
We appreciate it.
And finally, our meeting yesterday, FASA, the Florida Association of School Administrators, actually sponsored our reception. And he's talking, she's talking about John Mixon, put on a nice little talk, kind of kept us rolling. But it was nice to get together with all our principals and our district staff, and our school board members came. Most of them came, and we appreciate them attending that. But that was just a time for me to meet with all of them. That was a rescheduled meeting from November 22nd. I had to go home sick that day, my first day on the job. But we rescheduled that, I wanted to meet with them and talk to them about what our vision was and, you know, what expectations were. You know, our people want to know what's expected of them, and I want to make sure that's very clear because we do have a clear direction that we want to move our district in. So we want them to be a part of that. Also, I'll be attending all the faculty meetings around the district. The principals have set up faculty meetings specifically for me to come and just meet with our faculty. And I'm also going to ask our area directors for those specific schools to attend because we want the faculty and the administration to know that we're there to support them. Our area directors are there, they're their first point of communication with the district, and we want them to know that we are there to serve them, and we're all in this together to move our district forward. So I'm excited for the future, and I appreciate what our school board's doing. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'd just like to say thank you for everything each one of you do for us on a daily basis. And with that, our meeting is adjourned.